Go on whenever you're ready, Brian.
Alright.
I just make up a chair.
Everybody get situated.
How are you?
Get comfy.
There was a forty years ago in the St. Patrick's Day parade, the the Shriners and the and the clown cars. Didn't see him, ran right over.
And with that.
Put that in the notes and with that, rimshot.
Alright, uh, let's, uh, call this to order. Um, we have a forum. Do we need to go through and just say here?
Okay.
Yeah, looks like we have a forum. Uh, so, um, we have no old business and, um, we have three on the new business first. Um, I'll, um, take any comments about the approval of the minutes. Do you have a chance to read them? Any corrections? Um, or comments? Or discussion?
None coming from me.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve those. So move.
Alright. Seconded.
Alright, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? We'll approve those.
Yep, good, yes.
Good?
Yep.
Alright, uh, we have no old business, um, so we'll jump into new business. Um, first is, uh, uh, rezoned, uh, public hearing case. Do I read the whole?
Yeah, yeah, go on and read that.
Uh, public hearing for case number twenty twenty four zero nine R E Z seven oh seven Pawnee Street, wherein the applicant is requesting a rezoning of their property located at seven oh seven Pawnee Street from O B D Office Business District to R one six High Density Single Family Residential District. Um, we have a staff report.
Yep, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, this is a request to rezone the property located at seven oh seven Pawnee from Office Business District to R one six, which is High Density Single Family Residential District. Uh, this is an existing single family home, um, on Pawnee Street just to the west of Seventh Street. And I will turn on the zoning here real quick. Um, so it's where that dot is. So, the home had previously been damaged by fire and was repaired by the owner, um, and applicant on this. And they're looking to sell the property, um, and are requesting the rezoning just to bring it into conformance with current development standards for single family residential. This is another one of those that's an existing nonconforming use. Um, there's nothing that the city has changed or required that would prompt them or cause them to request a rezoning. Um, as we've had come up, um, recently, there's been some changes and changes in lending and insurance practices. Um, so when properties are sold, they typically want a letter saying that, um, it could be rebuilt as is. Um, and so that's what's kind of prompting a lot of these rezoning and special use permit requests. So, um, that is what has us here. They are not planning any changes or additions at this time. Again, it's just to bring the single family house into conformance with existing development standards. Um, it, again, it's to R one six, so it'll be in line with the other properties, single family homes that are around in the neighborhood, um, just to kind of be an extension of that. So I'll go through the conditions of determination that we have to consider. The first is the character of the neighborhood. Um, the property is part of an established single family neighborhood. Again, it lies just the west of Seventh Street, which functions as a commercial corridor with a variety of commercial and office uses. The next is the zoning and use of properties nearby. The property directly adjacent to the east is zoned Office Business District and is occupied by a single family home. Property to the south is zoned O B D and is occupied by another single family home. Property to the west is zoned R one six High Density Single Family Residential District and is occupied by a single family home. And then the property to the north is zoned General Business District and is occupied by the Dog and Cat Clinic. Next is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Uh, the property is occupied by a single family home and has been identified as appropriate for single family uses on the future land use map. Um, just kind of a note here on how this zoning got put in place with the Office Business District for an existing single family home. When zoning first came about in the city, uh, back in the sixties, a lot of this zoning was just kind of applied broad stroke across the city without a lot of, um, context or individual consideration to what was maybe on individual lots. Um, the single family house that was there was constructed prior to that time. And so that's how we ended up with a lot of these kind of strange nonconforming uses because we did, we didn't even have zoning in the city until the late sixties. So, um, that's how we end up with some of these. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. Uh, the proposed rezoning should have no detrimental effect on surrounding properties. There is no proposed change to the existing use of the property and it will continue to function as a single family home. The next is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant and zoned. Again, the property is not vacant. The next is the relative gain to economic development, health, public safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as it, as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. Um, the proposed rezoning would have a neutral effect on any of those items as again, there is no proposed change in use of the property, uh, no proposed construction at this time. Next is the recommendation of permanent professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request. The next is the conformance to, of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. The area is identified as appropriate for single family uses on the comprehensive land use plan. And then the final is any other factors that may be relevant, and there are no, are no other factors. Um, after the required public notice was sent to property owners within two hundred feet as required by Kansas statute, um, we had one question just regarding the status of the property from a notified property owner, um, but they had no comment. They were just more asking kind of what was going on with that.
What do you mean by status? They were wondering?
They were just kind of wondering what the rezoning was for. So if there was like a change proposed with it, or just kind of why is this rezoning happening? So, um, with that, if you have any questions, I can answer those, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Alright, uh, first, any general discussion from the commissioners? Any questions for the staff?
I have, I have just one, you go ahead.
You go first.
Okay.
It's not specific to this, uh, and I just didn't look up before, what's the difference between the general business district and the with, uh, office business district?
Um, so the general business district allows for more like retail type uses and the office business district is, as you would assume, more office related uses, more professional type uses. Um, but yeah, the general bus, business is going to be more your retail, um, restaurants, that type of thing.
Thank you.
And I have, my question is, does this, does this give them the right tax bracket? Being, uh, uh, real estate taxes because they're a residential rather than a commercial zoning?
Yeah, so this doesn't change the way it is taxed. Um, the county has their own land use classification, which does not always match the zoning. Um, a lot of times, and that's the case in this one. So their, their tax classification is the appropriate single family land use tax classification.
Somebody was able to figure that out?
Yeah, we, we do get, um, questions on that. Sometimes folks will call up and say, well, the county has us zoned as whatever their actual use is, um, and we have to kind of explain that difference. Yeah, that's your tax classification. That's what you're taxed on correctly. Um, the zoning is different and sometimes like in this, it's a little bit off with your actual use.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, we do, uh, have the applicant here. Um, do you have anything, do you have anything to add or, or, uh, do we have any questions specific for the applicant?
Ah, I don't know.
You don't have to add anything if you don't want, so.
Well, you, you guys don't have any questions, so I'll be more glad to explain.
Okay. Alright, I don't have any questions.
Just open the public hearing and, yeah.
So we'll open that. Is there anyone here that, uh, would like to enter a comment about the rezoning of this property on seven oh seven Pawnee? No, we'll close the public hearing. Um, now I will open it up to the commissioners for, um, a motion or three, um, options are to approve, uh, recommend approve to the city, uh, city commission, recommend, recommend disapprove, or table the item.
I recommend to approve as stated.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I'll second it, yep.
You can find it.
Either one.
You got it, Michelle? It's seconded. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, unanimous, we'll move on. Now we have, uh, public hearing for case number twenty twenty three thirty three S U P. This is forty one hundred South Fourth Street, wherein the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow college or university in the R one nine zoning district. Uh, we have a staff report on this.
Okay, um, so again, as you said, this is a request to allow, uh, for a special use permit to allow college or university in the R one nine zoning district. Um, this is for the University of Saint Mary. Obviously, that is another established use. Um, the University of Saint Mary was established on this site in nineteen twenty three. Um, colleges and universities are allowed in the R one nine zoning district with issuance of a special use permit. Obviously, kind of again, since zoning was established in the city in nineteen sixty six, after this was already, this use was already here. Um, there have been a number of buildings added to the campus. Um, the fact that the applicants were never required to get a special use permit was pro, most likely, I would assume, just kind of an oversight, um, sort of inadvertent thing just due to the longstanding nature of the university being on this site. So, um, they are looking to add a dormitory building to the property. Um, and I put a map in there, but I will zoom in just a little bit to kind of show you where, um, just to orient you, the, the football field that's just east of Hughes Road. Um, and then just up the hill from the football field is one of the dorms, and then they're looking at the new dorm building up there with the other, uh, dormitory. So, won't even really be noticeable from the street. It's all completely internal to the campus. Um, won't really change traffic patterns or anything like that. So, just issuance of the special use permit for a college or university use puts them into conformance with the development regulations. So moving forward, um, down the line as they continue to add on and grow, which is certainly the hope, um, they would not need to get any sort of um, special uses or variances or anything like that since they would be in conformance with that. So the commission again has a number of findings to consider in looking at this, so I'll run through those. Excuse me. The first is the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of the ordinance. Staff does believe that the application provide, um, complies with all provisions of the development regulations. The next is that the proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, and convenience to the public. Again, since this has functioned as a university since nineteen twenty three, um, it does provide a beneficial service to the economic development of the city by attracting a large number of students to the community, as well as functioning one, as one of the largest employers in the area. The next is that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff does not feel that the use will cause any substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood as there is no change in the use of the property. And the next is that the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of the neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. Um, the use of the property again will remain unchanged, and the proposed new dormitory facility, uh, which precipitated the special use permit request will be internal to the existing campus and will not adversely, uh, impact any neighboring properties. So again, after notification was sent to property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property as required by statute, um, staff has received no comments or inquiries on the special use permit request. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you, and I do believe we have the applicant here as well.
Great. Discussion amongst the commissioners first, or questions for the staff?
I just have a quick question maybe for you, Julie. So, if this is approved tonight, when does it go before the commission?
Um, it would be, I have to have a calendar.
Would it be May?
It, when it would get, yeah, it would be one of the May meetings when it, because they have to do two readings of any ordinance, and so it would be in May when it's approved.
It's just a house cleaning thing because the, um, the, her commission expires on the thirtieth, so I don't know if that.
Oh, was that on the application?
Yeah, I don't know if that's a snag.
It doesn't, that's fine since it was valid at the time it was submitted, and that's okay, yep.
Just want to make sure.
Nope.
My only question for Julie.
Okay.
No questions?
Um, and the applicant i- is here. Are you able to, uh, can you, go ahead. Do I open the public hearing?
Yeah, you can open the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing. Um, could you just say your name into the microphone so we have a record in it?
Uh, Jeff Stockman with H C I Ball and Architects.
Okay, um, you are the contractor that's going to be, you're not, you're not able to answer questions from the university?
That's correct, and we did the design.
Correct, great. Um, any questions?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. How big is your dormitory going to be and how many students do we have a house in there?
So, uh, let me go, it is, uh, four, about thirty-two, I think.
Right.
Thirty-two students per, hang on.
How many rooms do you have?
Sixteen. Sixteen rooms total, four students per room.
Oh, cool.
Okay.
That's great.
And there's, there's also remote parking as part of the project.
And, and so that's what I wanted to, to bring up. Anybody that has driven down, uh,
Hughes.
Hughes Road, um, as of, what, the last year or so, there's a lot of student parking on that that makes it difficult. I don't know. I didn't see in the staff report if the police had anything specific on that, but clearing up that congestion by putting in the parking lot there, I think, is, uh, uh, very valuable to the, to the city. So I'm excited to see that.
It's been an important consideration throughout the whole project, so we're, we're trying to find the best way to get parking and a dorm in places that made sense.
Yeah.
Yep, and we actually had, um, one of the neighbors across the street on Hughes talk to us. It wasn't in response to the letter she received. She, she just had some questions about what was going on over there, um, kind of asking about that potential parking lot there, that along the entrance up to the hospital. Um, and she was actually pretty pleased to hear that there is going to be a parking lot added to hopefully address some of that parking along Hughes because it does get pretty congested, um, when school's in session. I know I personally kind of avoid it one, during the weekdays.
I, my mom, uh, she wa, wanted to give blood there, and that was the only parking that was available on the, and she
Yeah.
she took off and called me and was like.
Yeah.
Saint Mary, talk to her.
Yeah.
Give that number. So now I'll give your number, but.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Um, alright, thank you. Do you have anything to add, um, other, other than what we've talked about? Seems like a cool point.
I, I think everything was pretty well defined. University's excited to get everything in compliance with the way things need to be to make life easier for, for future projects.
It's nice to see the university grow.
Absolutely. It's good for all of us. Alright, thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments, um, on this matter? No, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commissioners. Um, any further discussion or I'll entertain a motion. Same three options apply.
Um, I'll entertain a motion based on, upon the findings as stated and conditions as presented to recommend approval to the city commission, which included conditions for the R one nine zoning district located at forty one hundred South Fourth Street.
Alright.
Does that encompass everything, Julie?
Yep, that should cover it.
We have a, uh, wait, so we have a motion to approve?
Oh, seconded.
We have a second, right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous?
Okay, um, and then I, I will just make a note, since we keep getting a number of these, um, special uses or rezonings for existing nonconforming uses, and since the, we've had the discussion before and the question has been asked, um, I've talked with the city attorney, um, there's really no good or legal way to kind of broad stroke, um, give, you know, approval to these nonconforming uses, um, because while a good number of them may be appropriate to continue, um, I'm perfectly fine, there may be some that we want to see kind of go away through attrition. Um, you know, kind of as things turn over. So, in talking with him, there's really, again, no legal way to just kind of go through um, and give that approval to them. Um, so, most of them are going to be perfectly fine, like we see with a lot of the existing duplexes. Um, what, you know, what we can do with those is what we kind of talked about, um, and that may be something that we, at our next go around with the updates, the development regulations next year, make, um, two-family dwellings just an allowed use and single-family zoning districts. Um, that may not be something that's appropriate, but that's something, that's more the line of discussion that we should be having, um, and just making those an allowed use, um, in some instances. So, um, I have, so again, I, I just wanted to tell you that I have talked to the city attorney about it. Um, there's really no good way to address all of them at once, and then you know, in older town like Lubbock, there are going to be a lot of those nonconforming uses, um, when so much of the town was built before we even had zoning. Um, so, but yeah, looking forward, we are always looking for ways to, um, address some of that in ways that are, again, legal and appropriate for the situation, so.
Is there, is there a way though on the application side of things, when somebody submits an application and we look at it like, um, the seven oh seven Pawnee? I mean, even I can look at that and say, yeah, that's, that seems to make sense. Can we not build that into the, into the process that when, when somebody brings us something like this and it makes sense that, you know, it doesn't have to go through the whole process or?
Unfortunately, no. Um, with rezonings and special use permits, those are pretty clearly laid out in state statutes. Um, and so there's the process that we legally, again, have to go through based on statute. If it needs to be rezoned or if it needs a special use permit, we have to provide the notice. It has to come to planning commission. It has to go to city commission. I mean, that's not really something that we can just yet administratively say, yes, it makes sense. This is logical.
It's government, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yes, it's government, um, and we do have our shortcuts.
Yes, no, understand. That, that's all good. Alright, thank you.
And there should be several eyes upon it, I believe.
Yeah, and so, it, it can be a hindrance, but it can also, you know, it's kind of that checks and balances thing, and so, um, but yeah, absolutely, always, you know, uh, looking for ways that, yeah, we can get it written in. So, you know, maybe certain things, um, we can always add more uses that are allowed by right in zoning districts. Um, and that is kind of a trend just in general across the country, um, to allow, you know, two-family or other multifamily in all residential zoning districts. So again, that may not be appropriate here, but certainly something to take a look at going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, third and final agenda item, we've got a final plat for Whispering Hills West replat, final plat. And this is case number twenty twenty four dash ten S U B. Um, I think we have a staff report?
Yeah, so, um, so again, you guys will probably remember this, um, Whispering Hills West replat that we just did at the end of last year. Um, let me see if my map caught up, yeah. She's being slow tonight. Um, but just to the west of the existing Whispering Hills subdivision, um, a large portion of it, um, approximately eighty acres, uh, had remained undeveloped and was purchased. And, um, so replatted into two separate residential lots. Um, and so that was done, again, back at the end of last year. This replat is being requested in order to break off five separate tracks. Um, kind of along the western, trying to figure out the best way to show this, kind of along the eastern, I'm sorry, edge of the plat. So as this butts up to the existing, uh, single-family subdivision, as tends to happen when houses back up to open land just over the years, um, some of their uses can sort of encroach on that open land when it's not occupied. So that can be no gardens, sheds, um, trampoline, play equipment, that type of thing, just inadvertently, um, that, there tends to be a little bit of creep there. And so the existing owner of the, um, the Whispering Hills West, um, had been in discussion with some of those, uh, neighboring property owners who've had a little bit of, um, overlap onto their property. You can kind of see here just from the aerial, um, like there's, I think, a pool that encroaches, a shed, fence, um, you know, some of those kind of things. Again, that's usually inadvertent. Um, people aren't quite sure exactly where their property line is when that's, you know, open land behind them. But, um, at any rate, the owner of Whispering Hills West has, um, come to us, um, would like to break off five separate tracks that line up with those adjoining lots, so that those tracks can be transferred to those single-family homeowners to the east. Um, so then, um, that would just be part of their property now where that shed or that pool, whatever it may be, lies. So, um, this plat is just to, again, break off those five separate tracks. I'll bring up the plat. Um, you can kind of, zoom in a little. Yep, you can kind of see they're just over here along the east. Um, they line up exactly with those existing lots. So, um, should the plat be approved and recorded, then any of those transactions, um, would be between the private property owners. Um, if they're transferred to those single-family homes to the east, those property owners would not be necessarily required to combine their lot with the tract. Um, they would just own the tract and their lot. They could come in and combine that. That would be an administrative process since it's just, it would just be two lots combined into one. They could certainly come in and do that, but they would not be required to do so. So, um, that is what this replat is for. I can answer any questions that you might have, and the owner is here as well.
Great.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So how much more are they getting with each of those?
Um, let's zoom in just a little bit.
It should be less than a half acre.
Per each?
Oh, no, total.
Oh.
Yeah, they're all, um, one tract, the, the largest one is, uh, eighty-seven hundred square feet. Um, yeah, they're all very small.
Okay.
Um, oh, over here. Um, so most of them are about, looks like about fourteen, fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred, seventeen hundred, about three thousand square feet. So, yeah, they're, they're just kind of small little slivers.
The big, big one, did he, did he have the, or can?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
That's eighty-seven hundred.
Yep, that's the eighty-seven hundred, and that one lines up with
The swimming pool.
this lot, the one with the swimming pool at the end of the cul-de-sac.
So, when you put in a pool, you have to have a permit.
Mm-hmm.
And you have to have a fence around
Mm-hmm.
the pool. And in order to do that, I know I've had to go into G I S and, you know, this is my property line and all of that. Is that not?
So I'm not sure when that particular pool was put in. Um, li- likely what happens is that someone submitted their, their permit and their drawing, um, got their, um, approval for that. Um, for something like a pool, the building inspectors, I know, don't go out and check after it's put in. Um, we don't require a surveyed plot plan for that kind of stuff. So, you know, that's to make it easier, more expedient, and less costly for property owners. But then you do sometimes end up with kind of cases like this where they drew it out correctly and it was approved correctly, and then when it's put in, it's just a little bit over.
If they did an encroachment.
Yeah.
Sure, but if there's a, a fire on his property and the part of his property that hangs over, would his insurance cover, cover that? Or did he unknowingly kind of ruin himself by hanging over property when it was, uh, approved?
That is a question I do not know the answer to when it comes to insurance.
They had no idea that he had. So I, I.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll do, uh, we'll open it up.
Above ground pool, too, then.
Yeah, that's in the above ground.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff? Okay, uh, we'll open.
It's not a public hearing.
Oh.
Yep.
Consider a final plat, so.
Yeah, but you can, yep, you can see if you wanna hear from the property owner, but it's not a public hearing that you need to.
Okay, but we can hear from the property owner.
Absolutely.
And the property owner is here. Would the property owner like to speak?
We have two property owners I have hearing with, well, she's on the southern, um, southern house on the street.
Um, so for the record, my name is Laura Fowler. I live at twenty-three twenty-four South Twenty-Fourth Street.
And I own the um, property on the west, uh, Whispering Hills. Um, so as Ms. Hurley was saying earlier, she, she covered all, all the details for the most part, um. And, um. Yeah, we're just looking to, to clean up this. Administratively, so. Please approve this. At your discretion.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I think it's a fine thing that you're doing.
It's a very fine thing.
Okay, yeah.
I also don't wanna hate my neighbors forever.
Okay.
I, uh.
Ms. McDaniel, would you like to enter anything in or you're just here for?
Not, not this time, but thank you.
Okay. Alright.
So I made a motion to.
We'll close the public hearing.
Or it's not a public hearing.
Alright. Don't you, stop telling me it's a.
Better to go above and beyond than not far enough, so.
Yes.
Being in my ear about this public hearing.
We need to move his. We're gonna split, we're gonna split two up next meeting.
Thank you.
You can turn the mic off too.
Me too. Uh, alright, thank you. And so now.
Thank you.
Yes.
I made a motion to approve the final plat, um, for Whispering Hill West replat.
Alright, we have a motion for approval.
I have a second.
Alright, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, unanimous? Um, before we end, I, I had this highlighted, um, Chris?
He's, he's my son. He wasn't able to.
He wasn't here?
Yeah.
Okay. Tell him, I, I, I don't know if the other commissioners um, read his letter. Um, but the, the letter. Talking about how you all initially invested in that property after the fire and we're only gonna put about fifty thousand into it. But as you got going, you decided, hey, let's do this for real and, and really upkeep that, that property. And I, I, as a Leavenworth resident all my life, I appreciate people that come into our community and, and do that. And the way he structured this letter is, how old is he?
He's twenty-four.
Okay. This, this is, this is awesome. This is, this is what businesses in, in Leavenworth. Um, uh, should be doing and could take some lessons from him on um, how to engage with the community and, and have the right perspective. So. Please tell him thank you.
Yeah, I think, um, he's a very passion, pa- passionate what he do. It was, um, six years ago, I went to Dominican Republic, uh, uh, didn't, uh, went, finished the, his high, his high school. To play baseball there. So he was signing for Detroit. He came to Utah. He did a snowboard. He broke his collarbone. He, um, and the thing was that he didn't have any, uh, you know, second choice. But he was, um, stand for one, he to play baseball for the university. Say, no, I wanna sign in Dominican Republic as a free agent. Detroit wants, uh, to picture stuff. He got this, uh, conclusion. And he was like, I don't know that, I don't know what to do. So, he decided to go in real estate. And, uh, you know, a little bit mistaken thing, but like he's amazing kid and, you know.
This, this, this is, uh, this is great.
Great story.
Yes, and, and thank you. Please thank him. Alright, we'll wrap up?
Do I have anything else?
Good.
We do not have a meeting next month.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, May.
May, yes, it's April, so no May meeting.
No May meeting.